How's it do? Why are you so dressed up, Donovan?
These are my work clothes.
It's still summer.
These are work pants.
I feel like you're giving up on the sun, man.
They get a time after you don't even flood it.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item two, roll call.
Nelson.
Here.
Orison.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Moriarty.
Here.
Before we move into item three, just some housekeeping really quick. Soon, this chair will be occupied by a current member out in the audience. Mr. Dan Gifford is back here in the back row. Dan, could you raise your hand?
I'll raise my hand.
If, if you follow along with city government, you know that Dan will be our new city manager here in Spencer, Iowa. We're very excited to have him and we'll talk a little bit more about him and the process in the mayor's report, but just wanted to welcome you right out of the gate. Appreciate you sticking around town for the meeting today and we look forward to having you serve this great community.
Thank you very much. I have a part to it as well.
Item three, chamber commerce update, Sharifa Jones.
There we go. Thank you for having me. First, I'm going to pass out our annual report to each of you at the... So I've tried to make a habit of coming and just presenting to the council and the mayor at least quarterly, and this is about that time. So I wanted to share with you, tomorrow night, actually, we're going to be having our chamber annual celebration. It's from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. All of you are invited. It's really an event for our chamber investors to celebrate as well as the community to celebrate, and specifically, the business community. So what you have in front of you is our year in review, so we'll talk a little bit more about this tomorrow evening. We are having our celebration from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. with an actual program at 6:00 o'clock. So it'll take maybe 15 or 20 minutes for the program. We really want individuals to come out, enjoy the evening. We'll be highlighting several of our businesses here in Spencer along the restaurant and beverage line. So we're really excited about that. What you'll notice is that we have a 96% retention rate for this year. So this is up about 4% from last year, which is pretty incredible given the year that we had. And we also increased our members as well. We've had nine ribbon cuttings and 35 ambassador visits, so this is really fantastic news. Keep in mind, in 2020, we really didn't do ambassador visits from March until about June or so, and then we stopped them again as numbers started to rise in late 2020. So really, given the fact that 2020 wasn't as much of a complete year, nine ribbon cuttings is pretty commendable for our community. And also, going into this year, I think we have like four or five ribbon cuttings in October and November as well. So that's pretty fantastic. Our downtown certainly speaks to that. It's full. We've got some great businesses down there as well as throughout the community. As well, our chamber dollars have increased substantially. And so that's also a program that we're going to be hoping to pay some more attention to this year because that's really something that I feel passionate about is not only making sure people obviously spend more money locally or spending money locally, but also educating them about what they can buy locally. It's pretty amazing to know that we do have so many different businesses that can actually provide products that you might be able to find on the, on Amazon, so to speak. So also, we had a really big year. It's our 150th celebration. So we had 11 new events during Flag Fest, many of which we plan to continue on into future years of Flag Fest. And I know the city is a huge supporter of that as well. And then eight new events for the chamber and the Chamber Foundation. So with that, I would open it up for any questions that the council and mayor have.
Anyone have any questions for Sharifa? We certainly appreciate all the updates you give. It's a, it's a welcome change of pace from the past. And I know Sharifa mentioned that we're in contact throughout the month and the year, obviously, but Sharifa does a great job keeping, I think, our city manager incoming will be Dan and myself and anybody involved in projects in the loop. And so we greatly appreciate that and all the efforts to move the community forward. You guys are doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you. And if anyone is around this weekend, we'll have our closing ceremonies for the 150th celebration on Sunday, starting at 4:00 o'clock. We're going to be having a mayor's feed, which is something new, and working with several volunteers as well as businesses to help provide meals for, I believe, 500 people, the first 500 that attend. It'll just be over at the courthouse, so I hope you can join us for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharifa.
All right. Item four, the consent agenda tonight. 4A is a motion to approve the city council minutes of September 20, 2021. B is a motion to approve Class C liquor license renewal with Sunday sales and catering privilege for Sports Page Bar and Grill. Class C beer license with Sunday sales for Cargo Express. And Class C native spirits license with Sunday sales and outdoor service for Century Farms Distillery. C is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds of budgeted transfers for the month ending September 30, 2021. And D is a motion to approve sidewalk construction and assessment agreement with James and Christine McDermott of 1204 West 11th Street. First by Tom, second by Lauren. Any discussion on these items? Hearing none. All those in favor, let's see, vote by machine, please. Got a little bit ahead of myself there.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item five, old business. 5A is an ordinance amending ordinance number 736, designating an area of Spencer, Iowa as the Spencer Urban Revitalization Area. This is the final filing.
I'll make that motion.
First by Donovan.
Second.
Second by Tracy, by a nose. Any discussion, questions on this? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
All right. Item 5B is an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 7, Sections 1A, 3, and Section 1B 2 concerning the compensation of mayor and council members. This is the second filing. We did have committee discussion between the first and second filing. First by Bill.
I'll second that.
Second by Ron. Discussion on this? Questions?
Mayor, maybe for the benefit of the citizens and people listening, just to go over that, the compensation numbers?
Yeah, we sure can. Brian, do you want to clarify the numbers? Put you on the spot.
Like I did you.
Just pass the buck.
So the compensation advisory committee met about a month ago and recommended for the mayor an increase to $14,000 annually. And then also for the council, I believe, 5280?
5200.
5200, sorry. Annually, for, or 700 a year for car allowance for the mayor and 400 for the council, each council member.
And to Bill's point, the timing on this, per state law, we cannot raise rates during...
Yep, you can't raise your wages in the months of November and December. And then any, any vote on it has to be, or effective date is after the next municipal election, which, as we know, is next month. So these rates, and I believe this ordinance is set to actually take effect July 1 to coincide with the change of fiscal year, but it can't happen till, or couldn't, and no increase can happen till at least after a municipal election.
And to Bill's point as well, so the citizens understand procedurally, in most towns in the state, the council can set their wages themselves. We still will by action, but it is recommended in our, in our town, we have an ordinance that states there's a compensation advisory board. They meet every two years. It's composed of citizens only. And then they review the wages. They look at commensurate wages across the state of Iowa. They look at our workload. There's a series of questions, about a page and a half or two pages that we fill out to hand them as far as our attendance at meetings, how many hours it takes, things of that nature. And they take all that, weigh that in, and then they make a recommendation back to us. Don thinks we might be the only community in the state that does it that way, but we just want to ensure that there's a layer in between the ordinance of raising elected officials' wages and the citizenry. And so that is how we do it here and how we participate and how we came to this moment in time to do a second reading. So with that, are there any other questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, nay. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 5C is a ordinance closing and vacating portions of East 11th Street, First Avenue East, and Second Avenue East, and to confirm and authorize the conveyance and transfer of city property to the Spencer Municipal Hospital. There was a public hearing held on September 20, 2021. This is the first filing. First by Lauren.
Aye.
Second by Bill. Quick item of discussion on my part. We've gone over the timeline quite a bit on this project and how it usually works when we get an ordinance ready to have three readings. We will do them consecutively at the first council meeting, second council meeting, and then the third council meeting, and then it would be an ordinance. Because of the scope and magnitude of this project, there's things to work out during the different timeline between the readings. And so what you'll see with this particular project is a gap between, a significant gap probably between the first and second reading so that we can line up all utility easement agreements. We can make sure that service of the street and transition and timeline and all that is handled appropriately with the hospital and the city as well as allow the community, you know, the ability to contact elected officials during the process as they always have the ability to. So you won't see the second reading appear at the next council meeting, but I just want to let you know why. It's not that it's being tabled or, you know, postponed or anything like that. It's just part of the process of the magnitude of this project. And so with that, are there any other questions or comments concerning this?
No, I'd just like to make a comment that I'm happy to see that the hospital is expanding in our community. I believe they are a strong hospital for this community and this area. So, I mean, we do need, need them here and we're happy to move them forward, so.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else? Seeing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item six, public hearings. We have a public hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2021 West Leach Park Boat Ramp Project. Guaranteed not to silt in, right, Jared? I declare the public hearing open. Have we received any written comments against?
We have none.
Do we have any oral comments against? I see none. Do we have any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Do we have any oral comments in favor of? I see none. I declare the public hearing closed. Item 6A1 is a resolution finally approving and confirming plans, specifications, and form of contract for the 2021 West Leach Park Boat Ramp Project.
I'll make a motion on that.
First by Ron.
I'll second.
Second by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 6A2 is a review of bids received on September 30, 2021 at 3:00 p.m. with project engineers Cruz, Kate, and Nelson. Looks like Ross is here.
Good evening, everyone. Quick review here. We did receive four bids last Thursday for the project. Bids did have a little bit of a wide range in cost, but the low bid ended up being $135,370, and that was from MLS Landscaping Design. That bid was 102.3% of the engineer's estimate. MLS has done several sidewalk-type projects in Spencer for the city. They do have the manpower and the equipment to complete this project, and we would recommend award to them.
Any questions for Ross regarding the bids?
Yeah, Ross, would, would they start right away? Would it be the next spring? Because with the lower water table, are they, are they looking to maybe do it this fall when things are, or it's pretty short right now, I mean?
Yeah, I believe with their schedule, they're looking at next spring. We, we do have some language in the spec about high, high water levels in the river. So if that does become an issue, we may be looking for an extension of the...
Earlier in the summer would have been a great time.
Yes.
Thank you, Ron.
Is there a contingency on this project? Some overage, some unidentified changes or anything like that that we might be aware of? Or is it a pretty clear cut and dry?
Yep, we don't necessarily see that. So the project's designed with a, with actually a push-in slab for the portion that'll go into the water. So there's about 40 feet of push-in slab that goes, that is part of the project already. So as long as the, as long as the water level's not bank-high the whole time, they should be able to complete the project. So really, I don't see any other surprises down there that we really wouldn't, would have overlooked, I guess. So we've got quite a bit of riprap and erosion control as part of the project, and we'll do, we'll be doing a lot of bank shaping, and we've got all the permits set to do that work, so.
Thank you, Donovan. Answer your question.
Close enough.
All right. Any, Brian, go ahead.
Unlike like the wastewater treatment where we have a contingency line, we, that's, that type of line item is not built into this project. So...
My thoughts, since it's, I mean, it's not a lot over budget, but just, you know, if we're already going a little bit over, is there going to be, is there much out there for any hidden stuff? Or did we build in a contingency on this thing? That was all my question.
There's not, there's not a per se contingency built into the bid like we have with the wastewater treatment plant. So if there would happen to be something, it would just, we'd have to cover it internally with reserves, et cetera. So, but it's not part of that number that's already built in.
Thank you. That answered my question. Thank you, Donovan. Thank you, Brian. Any other discussion or question, Jared?
Yeah, so I'll just clarify a little bit. So when we started this project and we put in for our grant, we anticipated this, you know, estimated at $150,000. So with a grant and our, in our current CIP, we have up to $150,000. So, you know, if there were, there were any unforeseen issues or anything, I think we'd be able to cover those, so.
Jared, do you want to touch on the structure of the grant for the press and the public?
Yeah, so this is a state grant, so it's an Iowa Department of Natural Resources Water Access Recreation Grant. And so we had to provide 25% cost share for our portion, and then they covered the rest. So we, we received a hundred, a little over $112,000 that will be reimbursable for this project, so.
So the $135,000, $112,000 will be netted back out?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this item?
Thank you.
I would move to 6A, 3, or 4. 3 is a motion to table awarding contract. And 4 would be a motion to award contract for $135,370 to MLS Landscaping and Design for the 2021 West Leach Park Boat Ramp Project.
I'd make a motion to award it.
First by Tom.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Discussion on this? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 7, new business. 7A is a motion to approve a proposal from Midwest Mechanical Incorporated for the purchase and installation of a pool heater for the Spencer Family Aquatic Center in the amount of $26,796. This is excluding the electrical install costs. This was discussed at the last committee of the whole meeting a week ago. First by Bill. Second by George. Any discussion on this?
I'd like to point out that...
Is this what the...
Sorry, Tom. George, you want to put your mic on? There you go.
Thank you.
Yep.
I believe, Jared, the insurance has come to force on that, right?
Yeah, so we actually submitted an insurance... For that particular pool heater, because it was determined there was probably a small fire. It overheated at no fault of our own. And so the insurance company did approve that insurance claim to replace, purchase a replacement heater for the pool. Minus a $1,000 deductible, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jared or discussion on this? Tom, do you have anything?
So Jared, what, what portion of, this is for the purchase and installation. The insurance company isn't going to give us for the installation. So what, what portion is for the...
Yep, so we, we gave them a quote that we received from Midwestern Mechanical that stated, had itemized on there, and it included install of the gas piping and water lines and stuff, so.
Okay, so they will pay that portion of it.
Yeah, we're getting a check for $25,000.
Okay. Yeah, I just assumed that they probably wouldn't pay for the installation, but that's great.
Yep.
So the only thing out of our pocket, as Jared said, would be the $1,000 deductible and then the electrical, electrician's cost because we didn't have that at the time we submitted the claim, so.
Right, so. Thanks for getting that done.
Very good. Thank you, Jared.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Did you abstain, Donovan?
I did abstain.
Donovan abstained.
Thank you.
I assumed, but I didn't call for it, so. 7B is a motion to approve amendment to agreement for railroad crossing project with Iowa DOT, Dakota, Minnesota, and Eastern Railroad Corporation and City of Spencer for project RRP-RR032058A00, DOT number 385710B, located on Fourth Avenue East in Spencer, originally executed on December 4, 2019.
I'm sorry, could you repeat all that?
I could, but nobody wants to hear it, Tom.
A lot of numbers.
First by Tom.
Second.
Second by Tracy. Some discussion on this? Question? Clarification? Mark, you want to touch on this?
Certainly. Good evening. This is a railroad crossing safety improvement grant through the Iowa DOT. The DOT pays 90% of the grant, 5% is local, and the other 5% is from the rail. It'll be a rail, rail company. It'll be a rail crossing improvement along with safety arms and lights. After they started the design, it was a little more complex than they first anticipated with a private spur line to the south, so they had to add some additional sidewalk and lighting to that. So it's a good project. When these opportunities come in, we continually fill out the applications, and that is where some of our lighting upgrades have come from as a result of these grants.
Thank you, Mark. Any other discussion or question on this? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 7C is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for the 2021 West Fourth Street and 32nd Avenue West Storm Sewer Project with BD Construction for $636,465, which is reflective of the base bid. I know we went over the different options before, so. First by Lauren.
I'll second.
Second by George. Discussion, questions on this? Hearing, go ahead, Ron.
For everybody's information, it's out by the sheriff's office. I mean, it gives an address by 32nd, but it's that spur right there.
Yeah, as a reminder, this project starts at the river on West Fourth Street by the, by the bridge or just west of the bridge, out by the sheriff's office.
18th Street, or 4th, sorry.
Yes, and, and runs from there out to the intersection of 32nd Avenue West and West Fourth Street.
Correct.
You want to touch real quick on the intent of the project, why, why we're doing it?
Yes. So what we are doing is establishing a storm sewer outlet for that area. Currently, the storm water just drains out into the field in the, the new Westfield addition area, and there is no real outlet. The area's pretty flat and has kind of created a bowl for the water. So the intent of this project is to create an outlet for the Westfield addition and also the addition to the west of that. Could also be used to go further west in the future, so.
Thank you, Ross.
Thanks.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
This is a resolution, we have a roll call. I'm sorry, excuse me. My bad.
As, as I was told once, I remember my first meeting too.
I thought you called for a voice call, I'm sorry. Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Put that on the record. I'm not the one that goofed up. All right, I like that.
My turn.
All right. 7D is a, it's a motion to approve purchase of a 2022 Ford Utility Police Interceptor, all-wheel drive, and one 2022 Ford F-150 Police Responder for the Police Department from Don Pearson Ford for a total of $72,325 after trade-ins of current vehicles. This is a CIP item, and this was discussed and made a recommendation by the Public Safety Committee meeting, at the Public Safety Committee meeting on September 30, 2021. First by George.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion or questions on this? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. 7E is a motion to approve change order number one to the 2021 Library HVAC Project for an increase of $6,009. First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion, questions on this?
Was this the only increase on this, Mayor? Do we, didn't we have something, a bump on this before?
Not that I remember on this project. This is the first change order that I...
First change on this one?
Yeah.
What's, what's the reason for this?
So as we, as the contractors got into the in-floor heating, when they cracked open the pipe or whatever, there was no water in the system. And so it's to test to see if the actual pipes are still structurally and, structurally there or if there's some sort of leak, et cetera, before. And so instead of just starting to chop into the floor, digging around, trying to locate it, they're going to pressure test it to see if it actually holds water or air pressure. That's what the engineer had recommended before they start trying to cut into the floor to see why there wasn't any water in the pipes when they opened it up as they expected there should have been. So it's really to see if there, if we have any other, any other issues with the in-floor heating before. And then if there's not, if it is, then they'll continue. If there are, it sounded like we may have to come back and decide whether it's worth trying to fix that trying to fix that or look at some other alternative.
So six thousand dollars just to test?
Yeah, that sounds awful high.
Just to do a pressure test on the water lines?
They, they, you're, you can see they're itemized of what they had to put into it. Our engineer thought that was reasonable. EDA engineer, or, I'm not going to try to guess what, can't remember what EDA stands for, but they're the HVAC engineers we have hired for the project.
Any other discussion or questions on this? Do you want to probe deeper?
I got a little, I mean, they're charging like, it's four hundred and eighty miles, can't we have that done locally? Or, I mean, I mean, if we have somebody local that, I mean, I'm just reading through the itemization.
Well, one of the things we, since they're, they are the contractor on the project, we thought it was easier to just continue utilizing their services versus trying to find someone else to bring in and coordinate another contractor to bring in, since they're the one that is already doing this project.
I, I just see the labor, forty hours to, to pressure test seems like an awful lot of, I mean, it just seems awful high. I mean, it just seems awful high for, for testing. I mean, I just, I know how you test, and you put air hose on it and you pump it up. Well, Mr. Don would be a-
I abstain.
You're, oh, are you involved in this one?
No.
But, but your opinion?
Well, without looking at, see how many zones and how many lines, you know, if it was one line, yeah, it's, it's a lot, but when you're talking in-floor heat, you're talking multiple lines coming out of the floor that you had to test each one.
Right.
So, you know, I haven't physically went and looked at the project to see where all the lines are coming and everything, so I really can't, I really can't say on whether that's a lot or not.
Right.
If, if, if the engineers have, have looked it over and agreed that it's within reason that I don't have any problem with it and a little further explanation helps, I just was surprised by the number, but I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Ron, anything else?
Nope, I think that's it.
Okay. Any further comment or questions? Alright, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes new business. Department head reports, we will begin tonight with the planning department. Alec.
Good evening, everyone. It hasn't been too long since we gave our department head reports again, since the last month we ended in the end, so I'll keep it brief. We're looking forward to having some conversations looking towards the planning and zoning parts of our city code. Next week, we'll be bringing that to our planning and zoning board of, to talk about certain development regulations that we'd like to bring forward to help our, some of our current buildings that don't meet the current standard, which makes them non-conforming. We're trying to help get ahead of a current problem that might come down the line, which is always a good thing to do. Other than that, we're moving forward with a lot of cleanup around town, whether it be tree trimming or grass is finally starting to slow down on us. We'll be looking forward to snow. I shouldn't rephrase that. We're not looking forward to snow, but we're planning for it.
Signs you might originally be from Minnesota. You're looking forward to snow.
Yeah, but other than that, lots of good things still going on. One issue that we're starting to run into is that coming off of a year where a lot of folks, renters, landlords, ran into with some COVID issues, since the city of Spencer, we don't have a rental program where the city manages anything that's to do with the relationship between a renter and a landlord. We are getting folks calling us, asking conversations of what options they have to either deal with helping with rental, maintain properties. We've been trying to work closely with CHI for helping folks that need housing and closely with HUD, just asking, asking what resources are out there for folks, as well as continuing marching forward on having those conversations of what the city wants to do with any type of rental program. So those are kind of things that we're working towards. And I'll end it there if you have any questions on those.
Any questions for Alec? Alright, thank you.
Cool.
Library department, Mandy.
Good evening. As you know, we're working through the HVAC issues. We had the ducts cleaned. We had the library closed for a week. It was very successful, although they said that it had probably never been done in fifty years. So we found some interesting things in the vents, such as some books, some magazines, and some green savers from nineteen eighty-two. So I think we're actually going to do a little display of some of the things that we found in the vents just for fun, because, you know, we're librarians, that's something we do. We do have, if you want some fun this October, we are fully open, we are requiring masks, but we're open for all of our services. We have a gigantic pumpkin in, at the front desk, and you can come in and guess how much it weighs and you could win a candy prize. Also with our, I brought our newsletter because it's full of pumpkins, if you count them and then submit the number, you could also win a prize as well. We have storytimes as always at, at ten AM. And then our activity kits for the kids this month is, this, the first part of the month is glow stick Halloween decor and the second part of the month is the monster cookie kit. And you can also pick up a monster cookie kit if you go to Spencer Community Theater's Costume Contest on Saturday, October thirtieth from four to six. We will also be there handing out the kits, and there's also a prize wheel that you can spin for some fun book-related prizes. For the teens, we have activity kits, movable mummy and mini painting. And then the adults, we have a crystal necklace kit and a jute twine pumpkin. Our book discussion for the adults is Inland by T.O. Brett, and that is meeting on Monday, October twenty-fifth at six-thirty. As always, we are available to you twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year on our online services with Libby provided by the Iowa State Library. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Mandy? No, none tonight. Thanks, Mandy. Fire department chief, Kanye, and I see is absent. Or should I see, I don't see Chief Kanye. You have his report, Orby? No?
No.
You just do it, please. No?
John said he would email a report out to the council. He's gone for a few days. When he gets back later this week, he'll send a report out.
Okay.
So.
Very good. Police department chief, Warburton.
Month of September, had the Spencer Police Department responding to one thousand, six hundred and eighteen calls for service, and we performed forty-six arrests. Month of September had the big event for us, obviously was the Clay County Fair, which had officers stretched a little thin. We work in the fair booth as well as the overtime out there for the grandstand events. All in all, the fair went extremely, extremely smooth. So no issues on that, not going to win. Number two, this month of September had officers attending suicide prevention training and de-escalation put on by Seasons Center. We also had Officer Chris Anderson attending the rifle instructor school down at ILEA. He will eventually take over for Lieutenant Rasmussen as our firearms instructor, being that Lieutenant Rasmussen will be retiring here in the next couple of years. So this will allow for a smooth transition for the department. Number four, the Iowa Lakes, Great Lakes Hiring Co-op tested in, in the month of August for certified applicants for police officer here in the, in the Great Lakes area. Civil Service met September twenty-third, and we approved a list of only two candidates. This is down a lot, usually we have a top ten, so now we're only having two. So I'll be working with Jessica as we move forward with the future openings to try to do some type of hiring campaign or something. We're going to have to get creative to get some qualified applicants. I'd like to congratulate Alexia Graves. She retired here this month after fifteen years of service as a dispatcher here for the Communication Center, as well as congratulate Christine Harson. She also retired out of the Dispatch Center with thirty-one years of service to us. So I'd like to wish them well in their retirement and, and future endeavors. Lastly, we've done interviews for the current dispatcher openings, which we resulted in hiring one, Justin V. He will be starting October eleventh, and so we want to welcome him to the Police Department as well, as we're still looking for one last dispatcher opening from four PM to midnight. So if anybody knows of anybody, we are, we're in need. That's all I have. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Public Works, Mark.
Good evening again. Keep it pretty brief tonight. Most of the September items I covered in the last report, and we were kind of off-sync a little bit on our department head reports, but in the last couple of weeks, a couple of projects we've worked on is we've treated eight thousand feet of sewers for root control. So that's a product that goes into the sewer line with a, an applicator that it's a foam that foams out, and then we go back like in eight, eight weeks and televise and, and cut and check to see how the conditions of those have, that's working. We're also doing some shouldering, which is the lip edges on the edge of the pavement in the rural section areas prior to winter. That was one of the projects today. And we're going to take advantage of some of the street closing equipment on the overlay project. There was a few issues with that on the placement, and Cruz Kate Nelson has gotten that straightened out, and I'm sure he'll cover the overlay project and, and Ross's report. So during that road closure, we'll do a large street patch on Fourth Avenue West, just west of, or just south of Fourth Street with the street division crew. Also, we have a couple patches out in the ten-hundred block area that was prior to the project for some sewer repairs. So the street division will be working in the same areas as part of the project going on. I'd also like to mention, we do have a landfill seasonal job open or part-time position for CDL driver and maintenance around the facility. We haven't gotten any applications, so get the word out for that. If you're interested, check our website out for additional details. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions for Mark? You took off awful quick. Parks and Rec, Jared.
Good evening. Just wanted to, to touch on and clarify, clarify some information on campground relocation. So this idea was, was talked about throughout our master park plan. There came a recommendation to potentially relocate the current campground to a new location. So what we did as staff is, is have a, a concept developed. That concept would be around Moose Pond and the Aquatic Center. So it's just, just an idea, and we've, we've had a concept developed. We, we haven't made any determinations or had any discussions on actually moving it there yet. Right now, it's just in the preliminary idea stage, but we have had some interest in that. We will have an agenda item on the park board meeting on October twelfth at five PM to welcome people with thoughts, ideas, opinions on, on that particular, particular item. So we welcome you on October twelfth at five PM. So what we'll do is, you know, just have some discussion, answer any questions, take thoughts and ideas, and then, you know, take that information moving forward if we, if we feel we need to move that project forward or make any recommendations or further that project. So the aquatic center water use, we're going to operate our irrigation system this week to touch, test each individual zones to see if they're functioning properly, how much water they're, they're putting out, that sort of thing, just to kind of give us a gauge on where we're at on water usage throughout our irrigation system. Another thing I wanted to touch on is our trails. So we have JR Schumacher, he's been replacing a little over a hundred feet of trail, replacing that, tearing up the old, bad portions that are broken, split apart. He's going to be replacing here, five more panels here in the next couple of days. We're anticipating using all donated funds that we've received as well as city funds for, for that project. There are a few items where we run into, you know, old junk, wire, things like that out there, so it's taking a little bit more time on the contractor's end to clean some of those things up, bring in a little bit more fill, so our money's not going quite as far as, as we'd hoped. So I think in the future, as far as a maintenance standpoint, we'll probably have to request a little bit more money on the, on the maintenance side of those, those trails, especially out at Staley's. Another thing we're having an issue out at Staley's with is, is kind of a never-ending situation is wildlife and beavers continuing to plug our, our outlet out there. It's, the current design is, is easy for those, those beavers and stuff to really plug that up and restrict flow. We haven't had any issues yet, but it could potentially backwater up somewhere else where we don't want it to. So something to keep in mind, I've been working with Iowa Department of Natural Resources, talking to fisheries biologists, they've dealt a lot with these water control structures that would allow us to, one, control the water level a little bit better, handle beavers a little bit better, as well as in, have the ability to control the water and so create a better fishery, better fish populations, that sort of stuff out there, so.
Thank you, Jared.
Any question?
Any questions for Jared?
Donovan, Donovan likes beavers.
So Jared, JR will be probably done after this for the fall, is that where?
So he'll, he'll do this stretch and probably just a little bit more in that, that southeast corner that where it's really bad, so we'll try to get a little bit more of that, that done this fall and that, that we'll use up our funds.
And I have walked out there, and there is, that, those trails did get deteriorated quite a bit out there. That must have been the first ones, pretty much the first ones in Spencer, or, you know, the design was a split and it, it kind of separated and stuffs there, so. So I believe we probably will have to, at budget time, go through some of the lines and-
Sure, yep, those discussions coming up in our CIP and that sort of stuff, yep.
Alright, thank you, Jared.
Any other questions for Jared?
Alright, thank you.
Golf course, Brian Moore.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Most of my information has been sent to you on the weekly updates, but upcoming, we'll be starting to prune the trees on the golf course and removing any dead ones that are out there right now. We'll also be aerifying greens, top dressing teas, continuing a few herbicide applications, and we're also going to be adding sand to our sand traps. That's probably going to cover most of the stuff we have this upcoming fall. Our irrigation permit, we've used ninety-five percent of our irrigation permit for the season, which runs April first through the end of October, and we've used eighty-three percent of our allotted water from our well. So we have, we have a decent enough amount of water left to get us through the month of October, so I feel, I feel very comfortable with where we're at in that situation. And that's all I have, unless you have some questions.
Any questions for Brian?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. City attorney, Don.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. September was a little more active month, about thirty-six hours involved. The, the top four categories included general administration, working with the administration staff on a variety of things, working on the hospital street vacation, magistrate court activity is, is picking up a little, and finally, working with the Police Department and the zoning department on a, on a major cleanup process in southeast Spencer that you'll probably hear more about.
Any questions for Don? Thank you. Engineers report, Ross. You look like the closest one to an engineer in the crowd.
Not sure what that means, but, cool. I'll take it. Just a quick update, on the fourth, or, excuse me, the Seventh Avenue Southwest Sewer Extension Project, BD Construction started work on that job today. As a reminder, that's a sewer extension down Ninth Street Southwest from the east side of the Wingcrest additions over to Seventh Avenue Southwest. And then on Seventh Avenue Southwest, we'll be constructing a sewer between Eighth Street and- And then on Seventh Avenue Southwest, we'll be constructing a sewer between Eighth Street and South Moore Drive. So that project, hopefully, hopefully it goes smooth for him. He will have to do some de-watering, which they're gonna start this week, and then, and then we'll see how wet it gets for him, so. The other, the other big project going on in town is obviously the Fourth Street Overlay Project. Pillar Construction started last week. They're the concrete contractor. They've been working on West Fourth Street between Second and 11th Avenue so far. There was a little miscommunication between the traffic control subcontractor and the general contractor today. They did put quite a few signs out and had more of a hard closure than what we were looking for. The plans for the project call for maintaining traffic through the project site as much as possible when work is not going on in the driving lanes. So a lot of those signs have been moved, and they'll be adjusted more as we go. So right now, it's just concrete work going on. It's full-depth street patches, curb and gutter replacement and sidewalk work. As, as the construction schedule keeps moving, you'll see them get the work done on the west side of town, and they'll jump across Grand Avenue and do more work on the east side, more of the same concrete work. At the same time, you'll probably see a, an asphalt mill come in, and they'll start milling the street. We're gonna take two inches of asphalt off the entire cross-section, and then you'll see the overlay work start with the new asphalt surfacing. So when, when the asphalt surfacing does start, you will see some hard closures to keep traffic off the asphalt until the asphalt's able to cool down or cure out. That's usually three to four hours, probably. So it'll be kind of a moving closure as they keep moving around, but we're gonna try and maintain people's access to their properties as much as we can, so. I do anticipate probably door hangers going out to those people that are gonna be affected first, probably in the middle of the week when we have a better update on the asphalt schedule, so. Any questions?
Hey, Ross.
Yeah.
Is the airport project complete now?
Yes, Farner has completed the airport project. There may be a couple of things to clean up out there, but I believe the airport is open again, so. All right. Thank you.
Should clarify my joke when I call Ross up. So normally, there's nobody here. So we always like to pick on Ross, and so the joke was, no matter how many people are here, Ross will always look like the engineer. Two are a roomful.
Sorry, Ross.
All right. City Managers' report, interim City Managers' report. Brian, you better make these last couple good, because you won't be doing them anymore. I'm not saying you're demoted from it, but.
I'll gladly demote this. Not much to report. A little update, as we stated earlier in the summer, we had told staff that on a quarterly basis, we had tried to resume our all-staff meeting. So Friday, last Friday, was the first Friday of the quarter, so we held an all-staff meeting, went over several of the items. At that, we tried to recognize employees that either have recently retired, joined us, hit milestone anniversaries, or have had any other significant achievement or anything worth noting. Trying to remember what else was on the topic. We talked about, Jessica gave an update to the staff on the City Manager search, because that was prior to Saturday. We went over gift policies and for employees, what states, both state statute and our own personnel policy relate and how to, or, and how they relate to gifts that employees basically aren't to take. And then we went over our COVID protocols and how we'll be dealing with that as we continue to deal with the pandemic. And Jessica gave kind of an overview, since she was unable to attend our last one, and our, her department's fairly new, not all the employees may have met her yet. So she, we gave a brief overview of what the HR department is and what her role is, and that, you know, employees can reach out to her if they have concerns and that. So we had probably about 45, 50 of our employees between the two sessions, so pretty decent turnout. We have about 85 full-time, so I would say the majority of them had hit either one of the two sessions. Trying to see us. Okay. As Don alluded to, we did work on some cleanup. So the Spencer Ecologique Development Corporation purchased several homes along Fourth Avenue Southeast over the spring and early summer, and then they have now cleared off most of those properties. And so their future goals, as soon as kind of building prices come back into line, their intention is to put out an RFP for potential development of residential along that corridor. So it'll be an interesting project as they move forward, but they remember last, I think, winter, both SMU and the city gave SEDC $100,000 each to work on housing projects and fill cleanup of structures and that. So that's what they've been doing this year with that. So we look forward to seeing what their project is as they continue that. And I would think, you know, either, I know they're intending on trying to do it, put out that RFP for trying to find a developer to develop it yet this year, but then with building prices and other things, I think we're, we're looking at maybe spring before they look at something along those lines. They'll have their annual meeting coming up this Thursday, so maybe get a little bit more details of what's going on after that. The last thing I'll report is that in this entire interim period, I think we've mentioned it, but we would, we had formed a coalition meeting, or group of both, a couple elected officials, staff, and some key partners to make sure on, that we were keeping up with ecologic development projects and making sure that we are keeping those going or nothing fell through the cracks during this time period. And we had a, a group of us met with a, an existing business in town last week, kind of hearing about some of their plans for some future expansion. And so we're kind of, it was, it was a good meeting. It was kind of exciting listening to them and seeing what we could look at and either helping them expand in their current location or what their exact plans are. And so they have no real timeline as to when their project is going. We had reached out to them, well, March of 2020, we had a meeting with them, and then two weeks later, everything else shut down. So we kind of put it on pause, and we reached out to them late summer. And so it was, we'll continue working with them through the, you know, as their needs arise, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Brian? All right. Thank you. Item 11, Mayor's Report. We have a formal action and then just a couple of other items. I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Natasha Moore to the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is to fulfill the term of Dylan Dykstra, which expires on June 30th, 2023. First by Bill. Second by Tracy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you to Natasha for volunteering to serve on that. Since our last meeting, I had the opportunity to do the welcome, community welcome message to the statewide American Legion meeting that was held here at the Methodist Church. It was great to see people from all over the state of Iowa. You hear the same things that we usually hear when people come. They're impressed by the friendliness of the community, the cleanliness, the ability to move around, and specifically what they wanted me to relay to the Police Department, Fire Department, and the emergency room is that there was an elderly gentleman from Holstein who had fell and had to use the services of our local first responders, and they were very impressed by the rapid response, as well as just the overall care that the individual received, and wanted me to relay that. And so I told them I would on my Mayor's Report. Poppy Day, as you can tell by the poppy on my lapel, is coming up Friday. So the Legion Auxiliary will be outselling across the town. If you happen to see one, buy one. And they wanted me to remind everyone that all of the money raised here stays here. It doesn't go outside the community. It stayed here to help those in need in our community. It looks like we got some friends from the Medical Freedom March in attendance, so welcome. I went outside before the meeting and briefed them. If they wanted to speak, then the time to do that's during the public comment. And so just a quick housekeeping, and we might address it when we get there before. But if you would like to speak, the podium is there. Excuse me. Make sure that the microphone is red, which, Brian, you control that from up here? Will you turn that on? Okay. And then for the record, we record everyone who speaks. And so for the official record, we would need your name and address so that we can get it in our minutes. Let's see. Dan Gifford is in attendance. We introduced him at the beginning. So Dan, would you stand up? This is your, this is your new City Manager, Spencer, Iowa, Dan Gifford. Dan, would you like to have the podium? You wanna say anything?
I don't have a lot to say, but I'll say something.
Okay.
I just want to thank you guys for hiring me, for one thing, and I thank the community, 'cause I've been around for, hanging around town for the last couple of days. Nothing but warm welcomes from anybody I talk to. So all the talk about friendliness, it's, it's all out in practice. And I want to thank you all again and look forward to working for you. And while citizens, my door is open, come and talk to me if you have issues. And I'm anxious to get to work, probably be a couple of weeks yet, but I'll be in and out of town. House search is going, might have a good lead, so we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Welcome. So just to recap very quickly, you know, this is a sought-after destination in the state as we saw from our over 40 applicants that we received. And our goal was to be able to find a community leader who could relate well, not only to staff, but to the community and through the hard work, I think of Jessica and the entire panel that served in the process. I believe we have done that. What attracted us to Dan was his even demeanor, his history of approaching and problem-solving from a 360-degree look about things. And we believe that Dan is the right person at this time that we need as our City Manager, and so we extended an offer, and he has graciously accepted, and will be moving here with his wife, and we're excited to have him. These people in this profession, the profession itself takes a lot of time, but just the interview process, I haven't asked Dan this question, but I would imagine that Dan has well over 50 to 70 hours invested in the interview process, relating from seeing the initial ad to talking to Jessica several times, to dealing with his references, and then dealing with us on a long Saturday interview. And, you know, at most, well, every single candidate came here prior to the interview in a different timeframe just to tour the facility and, you know, tour the community. And so it's a very significant time commitment that they made just to be able to vet themselves to us. And so, welcome aboard, Dan. Jessica, do you want to touch on the, for the council, maybe the next steps for the onboarding that will occur? And the community in general, I guess?
So as Dan said, he'll need some time to find a place to live. So we've reached out to him with some resources for local contacts on that. And I handed out the onboarding process that I laid out. It will, of course, be flexible according to Dan's preferences. As he comes in, he's a professional at this. It's not his first gig. So the onboarding will follow the standard, meeting with each Department Head, one-on-ones with council, attending the committees and board meetings that he needs to attend to, meeting with, of course, Brian to transition duties over, working on a timeline on that. He'll onboard with me and go over our policies, procedures. We hope to have an all-staff greeting for him, and probably, I think, a public welcome. As he comes in, we can have maybe an open house. I don't think we've had an official open house in this building, have we? Because he moved in right after, or right around COVID. So I think now's the time. So that's the plan. Any questions for me? Thank you for putting up with my long and drawn-out process of.
I think as a member of the council, I want to thank you, and I'm sure the rest of us do as well, all the hard work and, and guidance that you provided for this whole process. It's been a great, great process. Thank you.
Thank you. You're very welcome. It was my pleasure. Any questions?
Thank you, Jessica. Touch really quick on the project that Brian mentioned, the infill rehabilitation. So the council set a goal a couple of years ago about how do we address properties in the community that might be too far gone for somebody who would normally renovate houses or flip houses to invest in? And at the same time, these properties were in a condition thought to be not safe to live in, whether it was electrical code or water issues or things like that. And so the, the delicacy of approaching that and in how to, what is the role of government? What is the role of government in creating safe spaces for people to live in? What is regulation without overreach? And what is the role of your local government in the beautification of a property so that the property you've invested your time and money in that's adjacent to that property is also well reflected? And I believe this first project that SEDC is in the middle of has accomplished at least a couple of those steps, we're moving in the right direction. I've been contacted by neighbors adjacent to, who have lived next to and had concerns with the area that's being redeveloped, and they're very thankful for the role of the city in that. And the goal is never to take your money and then, you know, go buy private properties and, and redevelop them. That's not the goal. The goal is to be able to take the, the money that we tax you from and then reinvest that in the community in such a way that it has a multiplier effect in creating further safe spaces, further enhanced living areas. And I think especially when this project is done, you will see that. And so we do not take lightly any infill project that we look at, but I think at the end of this project, everybody, including the people who live on the properties that will be developed and the people who are living around the properties that will be developed, you should see a net gain in overall betterment of the community. And so that is the goal we set a couple of years ago. And what you're seeing now is the actual dirt moving and resolution to accomplish those goals. And so thank you, everybody in that effort. It's not been an easy, or, it's not been an easy journey, and it has not been won without hurdles, but through the effort of everybody, we proceed forward with that. At Rotary in Kiwanis today, there was a candidate forum of the council at-large candidates. I know a couple of them are here. George, and I see Deb and Brian back there. And so I wanted to thank you for throwing your hat in the ring. But there was a question brought up about Calvin, so I thought I would answer that for you all tonight. The question was, where's Calvin? Well, that was not the question. The question was, how would you handle Calvin? Deb asked, where's Calvin? And I can tell you where Calvin's at. So Calvin's not going away. In fact, Calvin and I have lunch, if not every week, it's about every other week. In fact, we're having lunch tomorrow. So the, the story with, with Calvin is as it always has been. You know, we try to work with everyone to find a peaceful resolution to move forward so that everybody's, you know, rights as well as social needs are met. And so I just wanted you to know Calvin's still alive and well. Calvin has, has, continues to spread the word and do what he does. And in fact, you've seen him probably in a couple new areas that he's trying as well. And sometimes I will get the question, Mayor, did you tell Calvin to go somewhere else? And the answer is no. No. Calvin and I get together just to develop a better friendship, and just wanted to answer that question. It was asked, and so there you go. And then the last two people I'd like to recognize in the crowd are Bob Rose and Mike Harlem. Bob and Mike have spent a significant amount of time in the community doing many things. In fact, every time I saw the cemetery fence painted years ago, I always thought, you know, number one, I'm glad I'm not on probation or, you know, had, had community service hours, 'cause that's where I'd have been, was, was, you know, painting the fence. But Mike, in his service to the city, always did a great job with the, the folks who needed community service hours and beautifying the community. And I think that's carried forward in the park maintenance of the trail at Staley's, and him and Bob have, have raised a significant amount of money. We look forward to, you know, participating in that as well from the city side. And just want you to know, we've thanked you before, but we do appreciate all the time that you guys put into that and coordinating everything. That would conclude my report, unless there's any questions. All right. Council Committee Reports, Brian?
Just a couple on there. As you'll see, as Shreefa mentioned earlier, the 150th Closing Ceremonies will be held this coming Sunday, 4:00 PM at the Clay County Courthouse. Mayor will be serving you food afterwards, I believe, so.
Yeah. Yeah, to clarify, Mayor's feet doesn't mean I'm eating. It's the mayor feeding the community, right? Yeah. We'll channel my inner Joey Chitwood and see how many we can shove in.
October 18th, we'll see us back at our next regular City Council meeting here at 6:30. Last thing, it wasn't listed there, but the agenda came out, or pre-notice for October 21st will be the September Northwest Iowa League meeting. It's in Mallard this time, and kind of dovetails into what Alec brought up. The program will be the rental, rental inspection programs, how to set one up, et cetera. Scott with the City of Storm Lake will be putting that on. So let, we'll probably remind you on the 18th again, but if you would like to attend, let Teresa know that, so we can get our, the res, you know, the numbers into them. So otherwise, sometime maybe at the 18th, we'll decide. As we had at the last committee of the whole, I think that you guys had said we'd meet sometime towards the end of October again to continue the COVID discussion if anything changes. we'd meet sometime towards the end of October again to continue the COVID discussion, if anything changes. So you guys had put off at least, at least for thirty days, any discussion on the leave time that we had talked about at the last meeting. So we'll probably look at setting that up somewhere after the eighteenth. Otherwise, that's all I have for upcoming meetings.
Thank you, Brian.
I have a question for Brian.
Yep, Bill.
Do we, does finance need to follow up at all regarding the CIP discussion we had about a month ago?
We will.
Or you want to wait till Dan gets onboarded?
We can, either way, we can have that discussion towards the end of the month, the first part of November.
November.
And have a little bit more of that, so yeah.
If this thing's necessary, we have another meeting before we get into it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Anything else on upcoming meetings? Item thirteen, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims. First by Bill, second by Tom. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item fourteen, other business opportunity to address the council. So as I stated before, if you would like to talk, the podium is there. Make sure the light is red, state your name and address, and we'll get you in the record. We like to keep it to two minutes. There's no hard-fast rule to that. The reason for two minutes is to try to keep it concise and then, you know, move on in the respect of other people. So Mike, would you like to talk? I can't guarantee I'll call everybody by your first name, but no, Mike.
Just due to the mics, make sure you speak directly.
Thank you, Mayor. Just an update, Jared, the thirty-one hundred dollars that the civilians and businesses, Spencer and the businesses, is that counting the concrete? Okay. We basically have thirty-one thousand dollars that we've raised from the community. That's not including concrete. Now, Modern Woodman donated, I believe, seven hundred and fifty dollars for concrete. And I believe Spencer Ready Mix donated twelve hundred dollars for concrete. Now, I have contacted Modern Woodman and Spencer Ready Mix, and Modern Woodman is going to do a memorial panel. And a memorial panel is about nine hundred and sixty dollars. And Spencer Ready Mix is going to donate the concrete for those memorial panels. Mike Shoemaker is deceased, but JR is his son that is doing the trails. And Mike was very involved in concrete, in the trails. So JR is going to do a memorial panel. Myself, I'm going to do a memorial panel for my father and mother, George and Regina Harlemann. Bob Rose is doing one for Kayleen. And Modern Woodman is doing one for, they're just doing one for all their clients. We'd like to do six memorial panels this coming, or next year. And then the year after, we'd like to do three memorial panels. So anybody that's interested in a memorial panel, get ahold of Jared at the Park and Rec, five eight zero seven two six zero, five eight zero seven two six zero, and let him know that you're interested in doing a memorial panel. We also have a challenge coin that is worth five hundred dollars. For a five hundred dollar donation, you'll get a challenge coin. And on the back, it's the trail itself, and it says, "We support the trails." Any questions of me?
Oh, I just want to say thanks, Mike. You did a wonderful job of spearheading this. And, you know, you and Bob are excellent community leaders by putting your time and effort in there. And I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you. One thing I should mention, I'd like to invite the mayor and council, probably before the snow flies, to actually come out and walk the trail to see the repair that has been done the right way, and the parts of the trail that are in bad and dire need of repair. So I'd like to be able to do that, if maybe we could line something up. Teresa, could we line that up? Our new city manager, could we line that up? So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Would anyone else like the floor? Go ahead.
Let's take this down here. I'm Allison Tapia, sixty-one Cabs Court here in Spencer, Iowa.
Sorry, just look, so the sensitivity to the mic is so the people online can hear it. If they don't hear it, then Facebook and, there you go. Thank you.
I'm Allison Tapia, sixty-one Cabs Court here in Spencer, Iowa. I'm one of the organizers tonight for the Medical Freedom March that we had. I'm addressing you guys, we ended up at your door, to let you know that we are going to grow in numbers, and we are going to continue to rally against the mandates that are unjust. We are concerned about our nurses, who have worked through this entire pandemic without a vaccine, who are refusing to get the vaccine and are intending to leave the medical field if the mandates continue. I know personally that there is a group of our nurses, and not just nurses, but people that work at the hospital, have banded together through private email. There's a giant, there's a pretty big group, I can't give you an exact number, but we're talking probably thirty to fifty at least, that are willing to walk out if the mandates are not dropped. November first, I believe, is when the freeze is up for Spencer Hospital. That is when I think Biden's mandate, correct me if I'm wrong, is going to come into action. I just think we need to do something as a city. We already have a worker shortage. Our nurses are already being ran thin, and we are going to run into a problem. And it's not going to just affect nurses. I've had people from the banks reach out to me. There's been emails from the bank saying that they're going to enforce the mandates. If the people that marched with me would stand up, I do have somebody I want to introduce you to that I met tonight, that I think her story is very important because she represents these hospital workers. Pam?
Hi, my name's Pam Alton-Hofen, fifteen oh two Country Club Drive. I have worked at Spencer Hospital for thirty-four and a half, not quite, half-years. Enjoyed my job tremendously. The day I got my seven-page letter that vaccines were going to be mandated, I submitted my resignation the next day. And while the stars aligned for me, I'm at a good age, I'm fifty-nine, I'm fully vested in the IPRs. It's really not going to affect me. I lucked out. I really feel for my coworkers at Spencer Hospital that do not want to take this vaccine, that have young children, maybe want to have other children. You're losing, if you let them walk, you're losing some very dear people who have cared for our community and given their heart and soul to it. So I just am against it. It's your choice. I'm against forcing someone to have a vaccine. Thank you.
I'm Caden Gillie. I'm fifteen. I am not in the healthcare field, but my mother is. And I would just like to say that seeing all this go on has been really rough. And just knowing with, okay. I guess the best way to say it is, it's a really hard time right now with everything going on. And I think it just takes a lot more time and consideration. And there's a lot of, you know, people going this way and people going this way. There's a lot of different thoughts. There's a diversity in the beliefs of mandate or no mandate. And there's a lot of nurses leaning towards no mandate, which, like they brought up earlier, there is already a shortage, and it's going to get worse and worse as it goes on. And so I think it's just something that really needs to be looked at a lot further, so.
Thank you.
I'm Jade Huntington. I live at two ten East Fifth Street. I want to go over our history a little bit. In Vietnam War, we saw what we call Operation Ranch Hand. This is where they sprayed Agent Orange all over the place. And our grandfathers passed away, our dads passed away, our uncles, from a cancer that the government lied about for years. I want to go over another thing here real quick. Congressional hearings on the anthrax vaccine in two thousand and nine. Gulf War Syndrome. We all know these things, right? These things happened. Our government lies about them. In nineteen seventy-six, they lied about the swine flu vaccine. The government paid out three point six million dollars, it may have been billion, I'm not sure, three point six something, in a vaccine injury compensation program. This exists. We've paid out four point four billion dollars during the history of this secret court. When is this going to end? We hear every night when we watch the news, all these different pharmaceutical products that have side effects, the list of side effects is endless on some of these things. Do we really want to play lab rat? Do we? This is a question for all of us. The Vaccine Injury Court exists. You can all look into it. Mike Wallace did a huge report on the swine flu vaccine. It's still on YouTube, unbelievably. But Sixty Minutes was the one who hosted this little endeavor. And they talked all about the Guillain-Barre syndrome, and how it affected a whole bunch of people. You guys can look all this stuff up. There's, it's enough. It's enough. The lies have got to stop. The division has got to stop. I'm done.
My name's Dave Andrews. I live at one zero zero one North Southwest, in the apartments behind the mall. I'm not in the public, I'm not in the medicine field, but I am a veteran. I served the Iraqi, with Operation Iraqi Freedom. I'm not the only veteran here. I know we have guys who served in Vietnam. We fought for our freedoms. And it's not just our military folks either. We have people who walk today, who march today because of our freedoms. We want our freedoms. Without our, if we don't get our freedoms, that's against human rights, is a human rights violation. I am educated. I have a master's degree in leadership. I'm also a certified human sex and trafficking awareness consultant. The one, human rights comes down to one thing. And Jesus said this very clearly, love your neighbor as yourself. It comes with respect. Respecting each other, respecting our freedoms. We have been given the rights in our country, based off of Leviticus and Isaiah, that we have a basic rights that God has given to us. But what is holding us back is sin. We can all turn around from sin, and that is only through Jesus and by Jesus, and the grace that He has given to us through faith.
Hi, Rebecca Moran, two oh five one, three hundred and fifty-eighth Street. It's very stressful in this climate of chaos and division, like everybody said. We just want the council to do whatever you can do to not create more division. If they're planning a mandate, and you have an option to say no, please say no. Please do what you can to fight for people's rights. If, yeah, if they want us to have to wear a mask to go into Walmart, or whatever, if there's anything you can do, say no, fight for our rights. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
Anyone else like the podium? Go ahead.
Hello? I'm Oliver McLean, and I may not be that wise or educated, but I come up here today knowing one thing. You guys should all look at the other side and make sure that you're educated in that as much as you are in your side. Even though it might look to be that the other side is right, you must always look at the other side.
Oliver, can we get your address, please?
I don't feel comfortable sharing that.
We, it's up to you, I guess. We just, we do it for the record, so.
All right.
All right? I won't drive by your place, I promise. You can drive by mine, though. A lot of people know where it is. There's a bunch of raw chicken dumped there earlier.
I'm Deborah Bureau, eleven nineteen Pleasant Lane in Spencer. I just want, I had nothing to do with this, the organization of this. I showed up tonight because I knew that they were going to do it. And it's something that's super important to me, that we have the freedom to choose whatever we want. You know, if you want the gene therapy injection, get it. If you don't want it, don't get it. But we should not be losing our jobs because employers are saying we have to do this. You know, there's a difference between mandates and laws. And I think we need to look at that really carefully. I would just want all of you that are on the council to have a really firm understanding of how scared a lot of people are in this town. I have talked to a lot of people. People that have worked in jobs for fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years, and they're going to lose their job because they're choosing to not take the vaccine. You know, this may not, you know, and I get really frustrated with people that say, well, it doesn't affect me. My job's good. I'm fine. I have income. You know what? If you're saying that, it is not about you. The people that are hurting and having a result from somebody taking away their freedom and telling them they have to do something that they feel very strongly about not doing, that is not America. And it's the freedom issue that concerns me the very most. Because if people are doing something for the greater good, if you look back over history, that's the battle cry of every tyrannical person, from Hitler to Mussolini to all of them. To ask people to give up their freedom to be safe? You give up your freedom to be safe, and you will never be safe, and you will never be free. All you have to do is look at the rollout of this quote vaccine, where they said, oh, it's going to take care of everything. Well, it didn't, did it? And now they want to put more in you and more in you. And again, if that's what you want to do, that's fine. That's your choice. But do not force people to make decisions that are affecting their families. I don't know if any of you have ever gone through loss of a job. That is so debilitating to families. Not just to the one that's losing it, but to everybody in that family that is affected by it. So just anything, like Rebecca said, anything that you guys can do. And keep in mind, there is a very big difference between a mandate and a law that lines up with the Constitution. Very different. And in this country, in this town, in this state, I don't see a lot of people standing up and being courageous enough to say, this is not right. And I will do it for the freedom of the country, even if it doesn't affect me. So that's where I'm at with it. Thank you.
Anyone else like the floor? You bet. Go ahead, man. We'll give you around two.
I'm a bit nervous.
You're all right. Take a breath. You'll be good.
Okay, so like I said earlier, I'm Caden Gillie, seventeen thirteen, Second Avenue East. And I'd just like to say, America was built on one simple idea. The idea of freedom. The idea that we are our people. The government doesn't own us, nor, you know, we're not just able to do whatever we want. We can't go around and do anything. But it's so, we were a colony of Great Britain. Great Britain had rule over us. They taxed us. We had no say in our governmental officials. That's why America was formed. And now we're here, and we have the ability to do this. So why are we not standing up and doing it? Why are we not saying, this is where we put our foot down, and this is where it's enough? So, thank you.
Real quick, we're not going to hold you guys up any longer. I just want to thank you guys for listening to us tonight. It's very intimidating. It's very intimidating to get up here. We had no intentions to come into the meeting. It just kind of happened. Little history, my kids are vaccine injured, and mine and myself are vaccine injured. I have what's known as an MTHFR gene mutation. It makes it impossible for me to be able to get some of the poisons that are in vaccines out of my system, and it wreaks havoc on your immune system, causing autoimmune disorders. Vaccine injury is real not rare. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else?
I have someone else that's coming, if you guys are willing to wait a little bit.
No. All right. Thank you, Oliver. Right, Oliver? All right, anybody else? All right, well, it's an open floor. I'm going to, Bill, did you want something? No, you're good. I'll respond to some of the questions. So you asked who's fighting and what's our role. So I think it's important that you understand what we've done and what we can do, what we can't do, and how those lines fall, okay? So when it comes to your local government, there is some confusion, I believe, between the City of Spencer, Iowa government, Spencer Municipal Utilities, Spencer Hospital. The most frequent question I will get asked is, "Hey, Mayor, can you go tell the hospital what to do?" The answer is no, I can't. We have no, we, meaning the City of Spencer, has no jurisdictional overreach into Spencer Hospital. In fact, Spencer's CEO is here. And so then, then you get in the nuance of the hospital authority, and I'm sure Bill would be happy to talk about it, but the, they have a board of trustees, they're elected officials, you know, and Bill is the CEO. And so if you want to know more about their dynamics and who has the authority to set policy or, you know, how that is, so I only bring that up because the hospital was mentioned. So if you want to, you know, take your concerns to that particular arena, there's really nothing I can do for you from a power standpoint. So it, as humans, we have power and influence, right? So right now, I'm just talking about power. We have no governmental power to go into the hospital and do something. We have influence. I can always call Bill and talk to Bill. In fact, we brought mask mandates up, and so just, we'll walk that through really quick. So the governor of Iowa, Kim Reynolds, very famously and still, for whatever reason, has a declaration of health emergency where basically, when that happens, it gives her superpowers over the state constitution. So Iowa, probably more than you want to know, but Iowa's a home rule state. So when she passed that, she then had the ability to do what she did, either with masking or telling you you couldn't go to an event or closing a barber shop, or that's why she was able to do those things. She trumped the state constitution, okay? So there was a lot of fallout then between counties and local governments. Mayor of Waukees, for example, tried to do a proclamation for a mask mandate that was not ruled because it wasn't a court case, it was an opinion of the Iowa Attorney General that that was not legal because the governor's overreach went beyond what the mayor could do. Locally, I have the power to be able to institute a proclamation of emergency for health disaster purposes. I never felt we reached that, nor did I feel it was appropriate. Bill and I did have conversations about masking when it escalated and the cases were high and, you know, what should we do? And Bill and I had, I think, a great exchange. And there's a process in the state of Iowa, which is what we did in Clay County, where the county board of health has the authority to make rulings over whatever body they see. So in Iowa, there's three boards of health. There's a regional board of health, a county board of health, and a local board of health. Here, we're ruled by a county board of health. So the county board of health passed an ordinance, basically, because they're not actually a lawmaking body, they then had to parallel over to the county supervisors, and that's why it went to the county supervisors. And the county supervisors couldn't change it. Just so you understand, even though the City of Spencer, you know, was within Clay County, it was not the city government, you know, that passed a mask mandate, okay? And again, I don't really care, this might sound harsh, I don't care where your opinion is on it, I just want you to understand the process, okay? So that was the process. And then they put different criteria as to when it would claw back. Now, when it comes to the vaccine mandates, this is somewhat new territory in that this wasn't a battle that was last year. So now, we have a new player in the game called the federal government. And the federal government is now, you know, there'll be some interesting, so there's the philosophy of what they're doing, right? And then there's the actual legal ability to do what they're doing. And so some of it is via executive orders, some of it is via, I'm getting into weeds here, you know, some of it's via proposed legislation. But we're one human being walking the earth, and so a lot of times, we get pulled between what the federal government is doing, what the state government is doing, what the local government is doing, what your employer is doing, what your spouse's employer is doing, what this organization is doing. And so you came here tonight asking for us to do something. And so what I want to do is be able to give you the answer and the understanding of what it is we can and can't do. And so again, power and influence. So if you go back to the council meeting that we had two weeks ago during my mayor's report, I very clearly stated my personal opinion as mayor of this town that I am opposed to any mandates. Now, it doesn't mean that I have the ability to block mandates, it just means that that's where I stand. I believe in the freedom of choice. I believe that, and Bill and I have had many conversations about this, and I've said this publicly, if you get to the point in your life where you're taking healthcare advice from your mayor, you're in trouble. Okay? Your healthcare decisions need to be made with your healthcare providers, okay? And I just, I believe that. We have a role, so we were heavily involved in the COVID protocol last year, but that's because the governor was closing your businesses. The governor was closing your daycares. The governor was making us enforce different rules and laws. We didn't overreach into the healthcare arena. That's what the hospital's for. That's what the county board of health is for, you know? And I believe, I don't want to speak for the other elected officials up here, but I think we're somewhat aligned in the fact that we're politicians. Our job is to make sure your streets are clear, your sewers, you know, you can flush your toilet, your police is taken care of, your fire is taken care of, you have a good, safe community to live in, right? Anything outside of that, we'll certainly do and support what we can to, you know, keep you free. But I wanted you to know, as your mayor, a lot of times you see these videos on YouTube's and people get up and they talk at their local government, and their government doesn't say anything to them. They just, for whatever reason, they just listen, the video ends, and then, you know, away you go. So I believe everybody here is reachable. Our emails, our phone numbers are available. If you call City Hall and you go to my extension, it's forwarded out to my cell phone. In fact, it's kind of funny, a lot of times during the day or evening, I'll answer and people don't expect me to answer. And just know that we're accessible, okay? And your opinions are important, as are everybody's. You know, no matter what group was here tonight asking us and challenging us to be able to do something, I would have the same response. And so, you know, go forward and follow your beliefs and participate in the community and just know that you're not ignored. It's important, and we appreciate you being here. It's a long meeting. We normally, like I said, we normally don't have many people here, so it's good to see people here, and it's good to see people involved in government. So that's, that's all I would have. You know, I rambled, but if you have any questions about what our authority is, what we can, can't do, you want to know further, happy to try to muddle through and answer them. And if I don't know the answer, I'll call Don and ask, that's why Don is there, you know, he's there to help clarify things. So. Yeah, no problem. Anybody else? All right. It's probably past Donovan's bedtime. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, first by Donovan, second by Tracy. Any discussion?
The young ones always have to go bed first.
All those in favor? Meeting adjourned. Have a great evening.
Donovan, can you drive after dark? You need a ride or?
Could you give me one? Somebody bring my pickup to the house, though.